Evening. Welcome to the January 10, 2011 Troy City Council meeting. We're pleased this evening to have with us again Pastor Dan Lewis of the Troy Christian Chapel, who will provide us with an invocation and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Pastor, will you come forward? Good evening.
Shall we bow for prayer? Heavenly Father, we pause at the beginning of this council meeting to honor you, to ask for your grace and your guidance. We pray especially for those in our community who may be distressed at this time of year. But we do want to thank you for all of the blessings that you've given us in the past year and ask for your grace and guidance as we go into this next year. Be with our council tonight and with all who are assembled here and may your blessing rest upon this meeting in the name of Christ. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Always nice to see you. Thank you for taking time to be here. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Haralak?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
I'm present. Could we have someone from staff notify the IT person to come up? Mayor Protem Kerwin needs some help with her. Something's strange on her computer. Thank you. This evening, we had no certificates of recognition or special presentations, no carryover items or public hearings. So we'll go right away to public comment. And again, I remind folks that this is on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda and that the time limit is five minutes if desired or shorter if they desire. And we have six people who have signed up, so I will call on them in the order in which they appear on my screen here. So I'll begin with Robert Arkin.
Good evening, Mayor.
City Council people.
I have some documents with data tables. May I give it to Ms. Bartholomew?
Yes, please give them to Mrs. Bartholomew.
I'll direct my comments. I think they may be of interest to all of you, but I specifically am addressing them to Councilman Haralak with all due respect. The late Senator Daniel Patrick Moynihan famously said, "Everyone is entitled to his own opinions, but they are not entitled to their own facts." This opinion that public employees are overpaid is an integral part of the opinions of Councilman Haralak and others. The opinion that they are not overpaid is an opinion I and others of like mine hold. Which of us is right? What do the facts show? Item A in Table 1, which is on the next to the last page of the handout, shows that public employees appear to earn 7.7 percent more than do workers in the private sector. Those politicians who stopped their analysis at this point have committed a major error. They assume that private and public workers are demographically identical. This is a false statement, as is shown by item B in Table 1, which shows that almost half of the private sector workers have only a high school degree or less, but more than half of the public sector workers have a bachelor's or graduate degree. The estimated median educational level of private employees is one semester at college. The estimated median educational level of public employees is about equivalent to a master's degree. The tasks that government is empowered to do apparently involves higher levels of knowledge, skill, and expertise than are necessary in the private sector. The data in Table 2 shows that the average salaries of state and local workers in Michigan, therefore including Troy, are lower than those are those of workers in the private sector at every educational level. Some cohorts are paid as much in the public sector as they are in the private sector, but in no case is any educational cohort in the public sector paid more than in the private sector. The data in Table 3 deal with total compensation, salary, and benefits. People with a high school degree through an associate arts degree, two years of college perhaps, do better in the public sector relative to the private sector, but everyone else does significantly worse in the public sector. And this penalty can reach a maximum penalty of 37 percent reduction in salary for those of professional degrees. So there's a major penalty to be paid by working in the private, public sector. The central finding of these research data is that public workers in Michigan overall and other states only earn significantly less than those in the private sector when examined in terms of educational levels. The story, when you do the complete analysis, is very different than if you stopped at the first line of Table 1. The same pattern is found in other states, both high-tech and low-tech, since it's not a function of any particular state. Now, private, the sector, both private and public sector pay not only for educational level, but also for excellence in performance, which is a major concern of ours. The city of Troy has just been named once again as the safest city in Michigan. Certainly, our public safety officers have demonstrated excellence in their work and have brought great value to the city. Should not excellence in public safety be rewarded? The Troy's Department of Public Works is so officially run that it has contracts with surrounding cities to maintain their police and other official vehicles for them. This Troy DPW operation has been named as the most efficient fleet operation in the nation. That's extraordinary. From sea to shining sea, there's nobody better what they're doing than our fellow employees. Should not excellence in public works be rewarded? Troy's financial operations have again been awarded a certificate of excellence for their work. The fact that the city still has a AAA bond rating in the midst of this damn recession is in fact a proof of the validity of that word. Should not excellence in finance be rewarded? And we can go down the list. Why does all this matter? Because Councilman Haralak publicly stated that Troy city workers are greatly overpaid in both their salaries and in their benefits, and this was his reason for voting against increasing revenue and so forth. That statement regarding the comparative salaries that he made is false, as demonstrated by the facts that I've given to you. Second, because Councilman Haralak stated in a recent council meeting that he might accept up to a half mil increase in the city millage to support the Troy library. In that context, it's fair to point out that that's only half the amount of money needed to run the library at the minimum standard set by the state for a public library. It would require another .48 mils, which would be 15 police officers' jobs. It is up, I think. Why would you fire, though? Police officers are doing a wonderful job in order to save another good aspect. Councilman Haralak has repeatedly been asked by his colleagues and by citizens to submit an alternative budget plan, showing how the city can afford the library and the police officers. He has so far failed to offer any plan. Which brings us to Lord Kelvin, a physicist and a Nobel laureate from the last century, who famously said, "If you cannot measure what you are talking about, then you cannot improve what you are talking about." Why should any citizen of the city want to follow the policy prescriptions of someone who does not measure and thus neither knows whether he's correct or not, nor can he improve what he's talking about? The only way for Councilman Haralak to counter my facts is for him to devise a detailed financial plan, showing all of Troy's citizens how he could maintain the public library while not paying off even more city workers than are scheduled to be let go under the city manager's plan.
Mr. Arkin, I have to stop you there because of the time.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Mr. Paul Beck would like to speak next.
Good evening. And the only reason I'm here tonight is because after I left the last meeting, certain individuals, one of them being part of the council and one being by the support staff, which he's not here at the present time, had made accusations that I didn't understand a question or other inducendos. I'm here to say that if there's any issue, I'd like to launder any laundry out in public. If anybody in the council or support staff that I pay my taxes to employ has any questions on what I say or what I make statements about, they say it to my face and not wait till after I leave. And I don't like to bring things out like this, but I'm willing to sit down with anybody on the council or in the management positions to sit down and work things out in private versus public. Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Dan Brake. Mr. Brake?
I'm not sure how well this is working. Thank you. The following message appears on our library's website under the title, "Troy Library Millages Fail." Quote, "The staff of the Troy Public Library would like to thank everyone who voted November 2 in support of the library," end quote. This message leaves us to presume that those who voted no on November 2, the majority of us, are somehow not worthy of the library or our city's thanks. I'd like someone from city administration here this evening to explain to us all what this sort of personal message is doing on a website that's paid for by the taxpayers. It's not only in poor taste and an insult to most of us, it's also a violation of Michigan's Campaign Finance Act for taxpayer resources to be used to influence the outcome of an election. And there surely is going to be at least another election regarding the library. I'd like to see that message changed tomorrow, if we could, to thank all voters for exercising their right and voting their decision on this matter. Along with the right to vote without restriction or interference from government, the other hallmark of every representative government that has existed is the right of citizens to seek redress of grievances through some sort of petition process. When we citizens choose to give up self-control in favor of representative government, we hold on to two things: the right to vote unencumbered and the right to petition for redress of grievances. The petition process is a way that all citizens have to say to those who represent us, "I'm agreeing to let you represent me on most things, most of the time." But we reserve onto ourselves the right to, from time to time, say, "Stop. Here's something that's so important that we're going to decide it for ourselves." That's what this petition process is. It's always been there as a critical element, along with the right to vote, of every representative government throughout human history. There's often been debate, even bloodshed, over who gets to be a citizen. But those who were considered citizens have always had the right of petition for redress of grievance in some form. Until, of course, the opening days of the second decade of the third millennium AD in Troy, Michigan, United States of America, along comes citizen Ed Kempin with the idea that he can bring a petition to redress a grievance he perceives about the budget and Troy library. Ed successfully gets nearly 3,000 of us to agree by our signatures that this is one of those times where something is so important that they really want to decide it for themselves. Our city clerk, thank you, certifies that the petition meets all the requirements evolved from human experience over millennia for such matters. And then what happens? Ed's government, our representative government, six of you, say, "Oh, my, we can't figure out what this means. We really don't like being told what to do. We don't like being told we made a bad call on something. So let's ignore the wishes, the orders of the citizens that we have sworn an oath to represent, an oath to follow the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of Michigan and the Charter of Troy and all the laws thereunder. Let's ignore that compact we made with voters in exchange for being elected about the petition for redress or grievance. If anything ever gets so out of line that over 2,000 of those we represent should wish to move the matter into the hands of all of the represented. Instead, let's commit a federal and state felony by willfully violating our oath of office and refusing to either pass this petition language into law or by giving it on a ballot to the citizens to decide. Let's just use the awesome taxpayer-provided resources we now control in the form of the city attorney in her office to go hammer Ed Kempin in Oakland County District Court for daring to put us in this position with his petition." Is it really who you are, the seven of you? Is that really who you are? Is this really what our city has become? You aren't going to have another chance after tonight to take stock of where this has all ended up. Because before you meet again next January 19 at 8:30 a.m., Ed Kempin has to appear in court to represent all 80,000 of us and our right to petition for redress of grievances. I'd like you to look at each other one time sometime later tonight and decide if you can't find four votes to end this lawsuit. You don't need the court to tell you what to do next. You can decide for yourselves. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Peters. Feel free to adjust the mic if you wish. The microphone? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. I'm sure we all share in the senseless shooting of the congresswoman in Arizona and hope for speedy recovery. I was going to talk about Troy a little bit tonight. You know, we got some schools here. I was thinking of Michigan State Management School, Walsh College. I think we have a Phoenix School, and I think we have another college here. And I was wondering why we can't, in this city, kind of, and maybe you've tried it, and at least I'm not aware of it, to, because I think we have some, like, some empty office buildings up there, like by 18 and Crooks, where that Chrysler building was and across the street, that factory. Well, what I was wondering is if, you know, they couldn't work somehow together, not only with the high schools, but with the colleges and say, like, that solar place, I don't know if it's still there, with battery technology. And maybe they could somehow work out a plan to get in some of those places to put some research and development for our city and, you know, not only that, allow the kids and the students and the teachers and the businesses to kind of work together. I don't know if that's ever been discussed or anything like that. So that's kind of where I was at right now, so I guess that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. James Savage is next.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. And certainly like to wish you all a happy and, if I may say, harmonious New Year. A couple of items on the agenda attracted my attention, and one was regarding the historical society. I'm not really familiar with what's going on there, so I would not want to put an opinion as to whether the $50,000 grant is valid or not. However, I do look at, it says to $50,000 to Troy Historical Society for a nonprofit corporation with the funds to be used to retain consultants. And I'm wondering that the people who would be even interested in running this would obviously have to be dedicated to start off, interested in what they're doing, and I would assume that some of them would be intelligent enough to be able to run it without us paying It seems that whatever we want to do, whatever it is, we have to pay a consultant. Don't we have the intellect within our community to do this ourselves? We have to solve our own problems. And so that really is the part that I am very curious about, and I'm wondering if this was a request of the historical society, that they retain a consultant, or maybe if this is just something that the management wants. And as far as consultants, you know, a few years ago, we paid, I think it was $50,000 to a consultant for the Futurian Study. Now, this wasn't too long ago. What was it, six, seven years ago? I don't know. But I think if you read the report of that Futurian Study and then checked it against the reality of today, you would have to wonder, why did we spend $50,000 minimum? Did it prove anything at all? Was it worthwhile? Because we have a whole different Troy now than what was envisioned just a few years ago. So I think that was basically a waste of time and, more importantly, our money. The other question I have was in the consent agenda. Oh, it's regarding the Michigan Association of Home Builders versus the city of Troy in a lawsuit. And it says the Michigan Association of Home Builders, Associated Builders and Contractors of Michigan, and Michigan Plumbing and Mechanical Contractors Association, Michigan Nonprofit Corporations versus the city of Troy. Now, I know you cannot comment on the ongoing lawsuit, but I'm just wondering, how did we get into this situation where we are suing or being sued by such a formidable group? So it's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michelle, is it LaCosi? Good evening.
I'm here tonight because over the past three years, I have written three letters and emailed them to the administration and city council members. Replies have been unsatisfactory, so I'm here to ask my questions on the record and in person. My first letter asked why city hall couldn't be closed on a part-time basis. The reply from council indicated the idea had been considered previously and a decision was made not to do so. My second letter inquired about an article in the Troy Eccentric quoting a city employee discussing 10 percent annual pension contributions and inquiring again about the possibility of closing city hall on a part-time basis. The reply indicated state law prohibits municipalities from modifying pension contributions. My third letter indicated the ICMA study was unlikely to uncover savings of the magnitude needed to fund the library. The study is scope limited and based on statistical comparisons to other communities. It should be able to tell us whether Troy has too many attorneys, but it won't tell us the aquatic center and pool should be operated by Oakland County or that city hall is open too many hours. Additionally, any savings identified will take time to implement. Savings won't be immediate. We moved to Troy in 1990 after looking in many neighboring communities. Troy had a fantastic community recreation program and an incredible library. Both Troy and Bloomfield Township operated fabulous programs using community centers that were primarily administrative offices. In approximately 1997, we again explored surrounding communities, looking for a new house. In the end, we couldn't leave Troy because we were so tied in with the library, youth sports, community center, museum, and junior naturalist programs. At the time, the Troy Community Center was located in the old high school, but the programs were largely offered at other locations throughout the community. In neither case did we ever consider the hours city hall was open when deciding where to live. Mayor Schelling, you expressed regret recently during a reply to public comments session indicating you wished the public budget comments focused on the overall budget, not just on the library. This seems inappropriate, since the council made the budget discussion about the library when they balanced the budget by closing the library. The council allowed the administration to present only three budget options during the most recent budget process. All three were unsatisfactory and displayed a lack of creativity, and council should have forced the administration back to the drawing board to do its job rather than to just keep its job. Mayor Protem Kerwin, you in defending reduced hours at the library indicated technology has reduced the need to have a full-time library. I contend the same, to an even greater extent can be said of the need to have a full-time city hall. Councilpersons McGinnis and Slater, you were elected, I thought, on platforms advocating an emphasis on continuing the public safety and lifestyle aspects of the city that drew people here. Why have you been content to wait for the upcoming ICMA report rather than looking for savings in the budget as it currently exists? To the councilpersons who have suggested operating the library on a subscription basis, I am aghast. To deny to the most in need access to one of the keys to success is unconscionable. I know, I grew up in need. I love the library and the citizens of Troy. I smile with pride every time I am at the library when it opens and see 30-plus people standing in line, more than are at the entrance to any commercial enterprise when it opens for business. What an incredible, intelligent community we live in. I have planned trips, researched appliances, and experienced old movies and music through the offerings of the library. My children have learned to love reading, studied for entrance exams, participated in summer reading programs, fulfilled volunteer requirements, and researched colleges through the offerings at the library. I have obtained college textbooks for research through Malcat and stocked a successful middle school science Olympiad library through the Friends Bookstore. Most importantly, though, when my child comes home from school and we realize the book he has chosen from the school media center for his project is totally inappropriate, we have access and can go to a neighboring library on Saturday to find a replacement. My questions, which I would love to have a dialogue on, but about which I will settle for a response to public comments, are: How much will Troy save in personnel, utility, and other costs if city hall is closed one or two days a week, both with and without extended hours on some days? How much will Troy save if the Aquatic Center and Community Aquatic Center are operated by Oakland County Parks? Not only are there direct operational costs, but specialized training and human resources costs to consider. Oakland County already has these systems in place, and their parks' millage passed last year. If the way to reduce city pension contributions is by requesting state legislators change the law, why isn't city council informing citizens to do so? You have waited too long to act. We have lost talented and dedicated staff. The city of Bloomfield Hills is exploring arrangements with other libraries. I implore you to pass a resolution to fund the Troy Public Library now. You can operate fabulous community programs without a community center. Troy has already done it. You can operate government without a full-time facility. Bloomfield Township is doing it. You cannot operate a public library of the type we need without bricks, mortar, and books. Copyright law precludes it. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak this evening. And so our next order of business is response to public comment. Are there council members that are requesting clarification from staff or that wish to make comments themselves? Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Madam Mayor, the last speaker did have some questions, and I think that you've heard them from me as well and some of the others from time to time. I would like to see management answer those questions, if they could, please. What would we save if city hall was closed one day a week, with or without extended hours on other days? Will Oakland County consider operating the Troy Family Aquatic Center? And constitutional law is what governs the pensions, so what would it take to change that? Those three things. I would appreciate an answer. And I know you can't give us that tonight, so it will have to be in memorandum format. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem Kerwin?
If I may, Madam Mayor, for the manager. I know, Mr. Manager, that you had, in fact, spoken with Oakland County, for example, on the golf courses. Wouldn't they like to take over the golf courses? And the answer to that was? No, thank you?
The answer was no. In fact, Oakland County asked for the city of Troy specifications because we have privatized the management of the golf course operations. So we sent them our specifications. As far as closing city hall down once a week, I'd like clarification. Are you asking for information that would essentially have the city of Troy be a part-time staff with a 20 percent reduction in their work hours, irrespective of labor contracts?
Councilwoman Beltrameen, I think?
I think I addressed that when I said with extended hours and without. So there would be multiple ways to do that. And that would be probably three ways. You know, a full 40-hour week, but as with the library on Saturday, maximizing the savings of the overhead. And then with and without, 40-hour personnel and 40 hours of operation.
We do have, in the budget that was adopted by council, the three-year budget as well as the five-year outlook. City Hall going to, I think it's four days a week. What year, John?
The last year.
Fifty years.
Okay, 1415.
I believe so.
Yes, 1415, which essentially is not only a savings in utilities, but having a reduction of staff costs. a reduction of staff costs as well, essentially going to a part-time staff, if you will, at that point. And we also have ICMA doing their report, which is due shortly. I'm not sure exactly what they're going to talk about for sustainability. And I'm just not trying to be argumentative, just looking for clarification. And it would be very easy to figure out what the cost would be to save utilities one day a week and still have staff work forty hours. It would not be easy to figure out if I were to just have a straight reduction on everyone that worked out of City Hall having a thirty-two-hour work week instead of a forty-hour work week because of labor contracts that we currently have in place. So, I mean, it would be a mathematical exercise, but I'm not sure what value it would have. But if the governing body wants me to do so, I think you indicated earlier that any instructions to management will be by resolution, so I await your direction.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beldtmaney?
The reason I ask for it now, I know that City Hall was scheduled to be a four-day-a-week operation in the future. I think the fifth year out, actually. Any savings as any lack of savings compounds based on how quickly it is done. And so that is why I ask for this now. And if you need a resolution, I mean, always before you've been willing to respond, but if you need a resolution, I'll make one.
No, it's, I believe, and I'm just trying to be accommodating to the governing body. I work for seven people, and I believe two meetings ago, it was indicated that any instructions to management that's going to be time-consuming would be via resolution. If I misunderstood that, please advise me, and I'll just go back to taking assignments from individuals. I'll be happy to make any accommodation. But I'm asking, it's not a rhetorical question, Your Honor. I'm asking.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Beldtmaney?
I would ask management, in the form of a resolution, to give us the information on what the city would save running City Hall as a forty-hour operation, but not five days a week, something less. Let's see what those savings are. Let's start there. And then we'll go into the mathematical gymnastics later if we have to, but I'll leave it at that, because you said that was relatively simple.
Point of order?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
If it's the desire to have a resolution, I imagine we'll suspend rules and then have one here?
Yes, because we're right in the middle of our response to public comment now, so if you want to bring that. Do you want to continue response and then go to resolution to suspend the rules?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. I'd like the city attorney to respond to why the councilmembers asked for clarification from the court on the petition matter. It seems that we need some clarification of why we chose to do that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, the reason why we are going to the court is so that you do not violate the responsibilities. There are conflicts, and it's difficult to ascertain what needs to be done in this particular case. That is why we are going to court. It is not a clear-cut matter in any way, shape, or form. We have made every effort to do a lot of the work ourselves. We have made every effort to be as accommodating to Mr. Kempin as we possibly can. There is a hearing on the nineteenth. However, that is just to see whether or not to continue the court's order allowing for council to have some extra time. This matter will be brought back to council for a decision, hopefully after the court has made her decision. And we expect that that will be in February, and we'll have the court's input as well, so that you will have that before you have to make your decision.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kerwin, did you have some other items?
Yeah, I had a couple more. And I didn't know, you know, I had mentioned at the beginning, Madam Mayor, to the manager, about the golf courses specifically and the cooperation with the county. Now, regarding the Aquatic Center, had that ever been a discussion as well, or is that...
No, that has not been.
Right. And I think, however, in terms of your conversations with the county, did the county seem, shall we say, more than happy with all that they have to run at this point, rather than taking on more?
I only spoke about the operations of the golf course.
Okay. I think that our last speaker brought up some important points, and I do hear this in the community a lot. The value of having a public library, and I don't think anybody sitting at this table doesn't see that that's an important part of a community. And we've talked about that being the soul of the community. We understand that. It's just how do we juggle after all of these years of no increases and seeing the increases now hit us, like a ton of bricks without the revenue to support all of the offerings that we have? And what we see on the agenda tonight are ways to address some of those things. We have the Historical Society, I understand Mr. Savage isn't familiar with some of their efforts, but they're here today to see how to preserve in a different form, using a variety of different techniques, some of these quality-of-life services. And that's where we are. We're trying to juggle and trying to address a number of those things. One thing that, in fact, is a cost-benefit, yet I hear over and over again from some as a slur, is this term of consultants. And it comes out, it's spit out as if it were a derogatory term. Yet for many years on this council, we would hear from some councilmembers, in reference to the Mackinac Center for Public Policy, encouraging the use of consultants who are hired specifically and for short-term commitments in terms of efficiency and cost savings. You're not paying a long-term salary. You're not hiring someone for something long-term, including a pension, which we hear a lot about, including health benefits, which we hear a lot about. It's for a specific or for a number of hours. And we have used consultants here. I can certainly understand, and the Historical Society, I think, makes a very good case as they go forward, on people who are specialized in a particular area, who can add information that a general volunteer, although very bright, and we have a number sitting here, very skilled in a number of areas, may not know this key area. And therefore, consultants are used, and used well, and used specifically. And I think that's what the Mackinac Center for Public Policy has recommended. That's what has come as a direction from this council. That's what comes from management. But to slur it out as if consultants as a group are somehow defective or bad public policy, I think is, I'm tired of it, frankly. We're using it because we have less staff, and this is a cost savings, and it is short-term. So those are a couple of the things that I did want to respond to. Thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else that wants to either inquire about, from staff on an item, or make a comment regarding public comment from council?
Mayor?
Councilman Howardak?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make just a couple responses to Mr. R. King's comments. And, you know, I was reading over this handout, and I appreciate the handout, by the way. That way I can read it in more detail and look at the references. But it says here, because Councilman Howardak has publicly stated that Troy City workers are greatly overpaid in both their salaries and their benefits. It's my recollection that the last comments on this matter that I made at a meeting related to salaries perhaps being reasonable, benefits being perhaps greater than we can afford. And, you know, I would love to be the man who hands out thousand-dollar bills and, you know, just give everybody a $250,000 or $500,000 check. Just make everybody who works for Troy millionaires. Why don't we do that? But that's not quite feasible. We, as council, have to allocate resources, and one of the resources that we have to allocate is money. We have to make sure that staff is properly compensated and benefited. And so the discussion is, what is that? And so it's my contention that the benefits, perhaps, need to be tweaked so as to be rationalized in the current environment. Let's see. Also, we have a comment that .98 mils is the required level it would take to run a library. That is very much debatable. That's Mr. R. King's contention. It's not a fact, it's his opinion. And to attack my opinion by using his opinion as fact is disingenuous. I would contend that you need at least $2 million to run the library. Actually, if you want to run it at its current level, at least two and a quarter million. And then finally, we have one of the charts that he uses to attack my position, which he misrepresented in the first place, related to state workers. And I don't believe that I've made any comments on state workers other than to defend them against an attack by one of our sitting members of the State House of Representatives. And so I just wanted to clarify that for the record, and certainly if Mr. R. King would like to have a more detailed discussion with me, which I think would benefit us both, I'm available. And I'm sure there are certain things that we're going to have to come to agree to disagree on, but that's just the beauty of public discourse.
Any other items? Soon, when we receive our ICMA report, which will now be at the end of January rather than on the seventeenth, some of the answers to things that we have been working on and looking at will come forward. And so in some instances, we've had to wait until we receive that information because it is with a significant experienced eye of the folks that are looking at this matter, and they've done this in other communities, with a great reputation backing them, that we are looking forward to this information. And so that is why some information has been on hold with regarding matters. But I would like to say that regarding the library, it's going to take significant sustained funds over a period of years to continue the library, even as it is now at half-budget. But to go to the full budget that it had previously would take even more funds. And with declining funds that we keep hearing are going down more, even though we've projected ahead for our three-year budget, we still have to keep adjusting those figures. I know that this is a topic of intense interest by this community, but we must look at it not, some of the suggestions that have been made would be, would offer some monies, perhaps, but not, in my mind, not to the amount that we would absolutely need. And so I want people to carefully consider that. But we are going to look at the information that's provided to us, make the best decision that we can on these matters. That's what we've done all along. Now, if there are no other responses to public comment, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Beldtmaney if she'd like to put forth her resolution to suspend the rules first.
Move to suspend the rules so that we can take action.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Beldtmaney, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we suspend the rules to take action. Discussion to suspend the rules. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote, please.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beldtmaney?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilwoman Beldtmaney?
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby directs city management to provide a report to council outlining the budgetary savings that could be realized with City Hall being open to the public forty hours per week, over a period of time to be less than five days per week.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Beldtmaney, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming. A discussion of the motion. Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I think it is important to include some of the information that was just discussed. And that was, for example, that there, that, yes, I understand that there could be a simple mathematical equation, and that's what the fifth year is. But I think it would be important to point out some of the complications that come from an effort to do this, including the violation of current contract. So I think that there would need to be, in addition to simply an equation or mathematical...
It's forty hours. That's not a violation of current contract.
Forty hours are adjusted for. Read it to me.
It says, "Open to the public forty hours per week, over a period of time to be less than five days per week." I specifically retracted it back so that we could start there with the easy mathematical equation.
Okay.
Further discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Yeah, I'm disappointed that we would start the new year somewhat attacking the employees again. Like, they're the reason that we're in our state that we're in, and they're the solution to all of our problems. Paying somebody forty hours a week, whether it's four days or five days, isn't going to save any money. Opening the doors an additional two hours a day for four days instead of an additional fifth day is not going to save any money. Once again, I think we're premature in our discussions. We set aside all of these discussions for after a report, and I think that's where this should be. And to waste the time of management at this point, I'm not in favor of that. So I do not support it at this time.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGuinness?
I think to clarify, what we're ultimately going to be getting, then, would be a configuration of potential cost savings that we might see, really, in cutting back on utilities and things that are not at all related to employees or the contracts. I am a little bit concerned, because obviously, we were quick to get some response from the employees in terms of concessions as furlough days, and we've heard nothing but grief, really, about the fact that we were able to generate cost savings from the use of furlough days, which state and county government are also utilizing to do the same thing, and people don't seem to think that that's good enough. So I think ultimately, it's kind of going down that path. It would provide less service. People are still working forty hours a week. The employees wouldn't be giving up a concession, so I'm a little bit concerned about the way that that's going to be portrayed. If it's a simple mathematical equation, where it's just playing around with what we're paying in utilities, I don't have a problem asking for that information to be provided, although I'm not really clear on what we're hoping to get from it. Obviously, I don't want to confuse the situation, as Councilperson Slater said, before we're looking at the full report. But I wouldn't be opposed to asking for that information, and then, depending on what we receive, utilizing it if we can, if it's of any use to us.
Further discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beldtmaney?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
No.
Mayor Schilling?
No. Motion passes. Next part of our agenda is postponed item, and there aren't any postponed items, so our next is the regular business, and that is a bid waiver for the Integrated Security Management System Expansion Project. Do we have a resolution for this item, council?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGuinness?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman McGuinness, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed for the Integrated Security Management System Expansion Project. Discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Howardak?
Just want a little bit of clarification as to what we're doing at the Troy Family Aquatic Center.
Um...
I believe if I call Carol Anderson's name, she'll materialize in about ten seconds.
Sounds good to me.
Twenty seconds.
And Councilman Howardak, did you have a page number on, because some of us don't have the, our system is a little different tonight.
Well, mine started on page of the agenda packet.
Yes.
I think it started on page twenty.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Would you like the question repeated, Mrs. Anderson?
Not necessary. I heard it. Thank you, Mayor. The intention is that the cameras be installed at the entranceways and in the front of the park, particularly to... park, particularly to capture the entrance of patrons and also the exchange of monies in the cash offices.
So the intent is to, is for cash management? Is there a public safety component with the part that's in the front, or is this all for cash protection?
It is primarily for cash controls.
And this is something that you believe at present, without this additional purchase, is inadequate?
I do.
Okay.
Is there any other question on this item?
No, thank you, Mayor. I thought that's what it was. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something I was missing.
Okay. And Councilman Fleming, you had a question, too?
Yes.
Is it...
We, yeah, we have, already have a security system both at the Troy Family Aquatic Center and the Fire Police Training Facility in place today. Is that correct? Is there any security system at all at either of these places?
There is no security system at the Aquatic Center. The Training Center, I...
Chief Mayor?
Thank you, Carol. Currently, at the Police Fire Training Center, we do have some security system set up there. This is to augment the security system, to expand and to fill some holes that we've noticed in our system up there. And the, as Carol indicated, the Aquatic Center does not have this type of security system in there, and we're looking to expand that for the cash coverage, which is one of those issues, as you start diminishing your personnel, you have to have people supervising cash coverage. One of the ways to do that is to make sure that you're monitoring it, you're able to go back later to investigate if there's a shortage. It also covers the two fixed camera poles in the pool area will help us for if there's any issues or problems in there, that we'd be able to go back and access that data.
Okay, Councilman Fleming?
So basically, this is an improvement. We've operated how many years without this system at both the Police, Fire and Police Training Facility and the Troy Family Aquatic Center? How many years have we operated without this, if we have, have we had problems?
Carol's indicating 19 years of operation at the Aquatic Center. The Police Fire Training Center would be approximately nine. Now, you added a caveat as I answered that, without any problems, this is to, one of the things with security systems, is to prevent problems that we start identifying. As you're aware, at this, at the Training Center, we had an issue with someone painting the back of the Training Center while we realized we had an issue there. We've also started identifying with all the high-dollar value of equipment we have at the Training Center. We've got a lot of people that go in and out of there. We need to be able to show who's coming in and out of the facility, who is responsible for securing the facility. We're letting people get in there to use the facility to the best of our ability, and in doing that, you get people coming in and out. We have to make sure we have accountability. That's our backup dispatch center. We have to have security for that. If it does become a backup dispatch center, we've identified, we've got some holes in our security system. With the equipment in the back, we want to make sure that the doors are closed. We get emergency systems with people leaving the facility in a, in an emergency vehicle where the door's been left open, because they're so focused on leaving, they're not focused on getting that door closed. So with this, we'll be able to fill some of those holes with that system.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Howrlech?
Just another question from Mrs. Anderson. Do you believe there are situations where people are getting into the Aquatic Center without paying?
I don't have anything more than a sense of whether, I think it is possible. I think it is possible. I do want to also say that the, there are, and I may have misled you or even misspoke, there are some security, there were some security cameras installed at the Aquatic Center in the past five years, something like that. My, I would, my opinion is that they are inadequate to provide security for the entire facility. This would enhance what is currently there for the entire facility, not just the cash counting area.
Let me just follow that up. If there was a, if your department found out about an employee or anybody who was, it's safer, let me rephrase that, found out about a situation where somebody had entered the facility without paying, how would that be handled?
It would be investigated. Depends on what the issues of it were. If it was a, you know, a 10-year-old child walking through the facility without paying compared to somebody who was doing this repeatedly and had an entire family involved, it may, may be different. Or there may be different consequences for each, each event. There, there certainly would be the possibility of police department being brought in to investigate that as well.
Any other questions on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protam Kerwin?
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Question for, for the chief, because in the background information, it didn't focus just on the Aquatic Center. All of those, these would be addition. I wonder, Chief, if you could address the quality of the cameras now going forward, because we used to see those kind of fuzzy things, and I think we're all familiar with, we all know that cashiers at 7-Eleven have cameras right there, and, and so we know that cameras are often used at places like this, but the safety features, the response from police, one of the things mentioned in here is the panic button. So if you could please accent for us here at the table, those features, I'd like to hear that.
Certainly. The camera systems that we have are a high-quality system that gives a high-quality digital image that goes to a server. It's not a videotape-based or a, one of the, your typical DVD-based one. It goes to a server. We have a lot of quality with it. It records times, dates, locations. The system itself is programmable, that if we have a panic alarm at a location that's covered by a camera, the camera can be made to maneuver right over to where the panic alarm occurred and show a digital image of what's occurring at that time. So it has great evidentiary value. It also gives great value to any police department employees that have to respond to an alarm at that location, because most of these cameras can be monitored in the dispatch center. Our long-term goal is to reach a point where all the cameras in the city will be able to be monitored in the police department. As you lose people, you've got to have security systems in place to be able to check on things and be able to look at a location via camera to check a door that reports that it's open. It saves you the cost of having to send a person to that location. So ultimately, all this will be cost savings. Specifically with the quality that you're discussing, ma'am, the, the quality of these cameras is very good. If there's an issue or something becomes blurry, we've discovered that it has to do with, with rodents or insects and that kind of thing, we just get up there and clean it. We've got some very good people in our IT department to take care of that for us. The camera, the ones that are referred to as PTZs are hand-tilt zoom cameras. Those can be maneuvered by the dispatch personnel. If they see something that merits further investigation, further investigation, they can control that camera and zoom in and get further information that way. Most, those are costly, and they also create more server space, so we try to minimize them on a PTZ camera we have and go to fixed cameras. Does that answer your question?
It does, and it emphasizes the point, we need to function effectively, we need to function safely, and we need to function with fewer people. And that's the way it looks going forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Certainly.
Any other questions on this item? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the Troy Historical Society request to seed money. This request is similar to the one that we received from the Troy Nature Center Society with some variations, and of course, a different group. There's A and B before us.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby supports the concepts of a potential agreement between the City of Troy and the Troy Historical Society, a not-for-profit corporation, to assume operational management of the Troy Museum and Historic Village, and hereby direct city management to prepare a formal letter of agreement for presentation to city council no later than February 28, 2011. And resolve that the Troy City Council hereby grants, I've lost my place, seed money not to exceed $50,000 to the Troy Historical Society, a not-for-profit corporation, with the funds to be used to retain consultants and equipment to assist their efforts to improve the museum's programmatic and fiscal sustainability. Yet further resolve that the Troy Historical Society will provide necessary funds in excess of $50,000.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protam Kerwin?
I'm pleased to see this come forward. I also think it's important to emphasize that in order to, for nonprofits to acquire monies from other organizations, that it's very important that support from the community, from the city, is included. When that is missing, it is a red flag for other nonprofits, whether it be Kellogg or Kresge or any other groups, because if the community itself, if the city itself won't support these, then they too choose not to support them. So the same way we celebrated the Nature Society and their nonprofit volunteers in working together to acquire more funds and offer programs that we've come to expect in this community, applause should be given to the Troy Historic members, many of whom are here tonight, and their leadership in working hard to garner the funds within and without, to see that these important programs continue to reach those who benefit so greatly from them.
Nicely said, Mayor Protam Kerwin. I personally appreciate the efforts that the Troy Historical Society has given for 40 years, and that they're willing to step forward even more to provide for the fact that they would like to see the Troy Museum and Historic Village stay open, provide the kinds of, of knowledge and expertise that are so beneficial not only to members of our community, but others who see this as beneficial. And so, we appreciate their efforts, and hopefully, the seed money that is granted will enable them to move forward to do this for the community. It's unfortunate that we're in the economic situation that we are in, and it will continue over a period of years, and so therefore, it's important that people come forward with creative ideas. The size and scope of the museum, the grounds, and the protection of those facilities is important to this community. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote on the resolutions, A and B?
Councilmember Howrlech?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. I appreciate you all coming tonight. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there any one that council wishes to have exempted? If not, then we'll have a resolution to consider all of them, and then after that, then we're going to have a resolution regarding the yellow paper that's on the table regarding the special meetings that are, that would be a time to do that after this consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, could I accept J5?
Pardon?
I have to accept J5.
J5, okay. Any others? Okay, could we have a resolution approving all the consent agenda items with the exception of J5?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yet hereby resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item J5, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote, except for item J5, which we'll consider after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. And Mayor Protam Kerwin, you asked for J5?
And I'm going to move the resolution at this time. This is J5, Michigan Association of Home Builders, et al., versus City of Troy. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby authorizes and directs the city attorney to represent the City of Troy in any and all claims and damages in the matter of Michigan Association of Home Builders, Associated Builders and Contractors of Michigan, and Michigan Plumbing and Mechanical Contractors Association, Michigan Nonprofit Corporation versus City of Troy. Furthermore, the city attorney is authorized to pay necessary costs and expenses and to retain any necessary expert witnesses to adequately represent the city.
Support.
And are you doing it with the correction of taking out the E and directs?
Yeah, but...
Move by Mayor Protam Kerwin and seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion?
I, I'll...
Mayor Protam Kerwin?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I simply wanted the opportunity to, to bring, to have the attorney speak a little bit about this case and the importance of it, and, and the reason that we think that this is being brought up when we are the first municipality where this innovation has occurred.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, this is a case that was brought, it was filed and served on us just before the holidays, and there was a preliminary injunction that was issued with this as well, but was not granted. The court has set a hearing date for this one as well, on the 19th, so it's going to be a very busy day. This is a case that alleges, it really deals with our privatization of our building department and the fact that it is now handled by SafeBilt. It alleges two separate things. First, it alleges that there is a headly violation, and second, it alleges that the 20% that is returned to the city, the lawsuit claims that that is a surplus, and that is under the contract with SafeBilt. SafeBilt retains 80% of the permit, building permit fees, 20% is returned to the city. However, what that does not consider is that we have building inspectors. We also have a number of other support that is provided to SafeBilt. So there are a lot of other administrative expenses in addition to the work that is done by SafeBilt. We probably are one of the largest communities to do the privatization in the state of Michigan. Other communities are considering that as well. And so, we believe that the lawsuit was brought somewhat for us, but more so perhaps for these other communities. I also think it's important to note that we did not increase our fees. When SafeBilt was, was hired, we had the same fee structure as we had before SafeBilt was here. So our fees are calculated to only represent the costs that we incur for building.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is before us. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mrs. Bartholomew, do we need to suspend the rules in order to move forward the resolutions that are on the yellow paper that are on the table?
Yes, you should, because they're not part of the printed agenda.
Okay. And I move that we suspend the rules in order to bring forward the resolutions about, regarding the January 17th and 24th meetings.
Support.
Move by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protam Kerwin, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Due to the fact that the ICMA report will not be ready to be delivered to us on the 17th, we're going to need to... to us on the 17th, we're going to need to cancel that meeting and also the special council meeting of the portion for the 24th regarding budget discussions. That's why these motions are here. So if we could have the first one, which is the cancellation?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kirwin?
Maybe before I do that, if I may, I'm wondering if it would make sense to not cancel the 17th, but use it for a different purpose. And I know that we had, we had made great progress on our, for example, on our goals and we were coming to an agreement on goals and vision. We had also talked about a benefit in speaking with perhaps some business leaders as we did that. And I didn't know if it would make sense to continue with the 17th and just do those two small things, not have a whole meeting on it, but see if we couldn't wrap something up next Monday night.
The meeting with the business leaders was supposed to occur after we received our ICMA report. So that wouldn't work to do it on the 17th because we won't have the report yet.
It's an opportunity, though, rather than trying to crush all those other things together, which is how it ended up being. If it was the desire of the business community to have a conversation with us, this would be, I think, a better venue to have that kind of a conversation. It's a thought.
Well, I liked having the conversation. I just want to have as much information to discuss. And since we won't have the report yet, it's my view, and perhaps Mr. Zurley could clarify whether he feels it would be beneficial to meet before we have that report or not. Mr. Zurley?
I haven't spoke with all the members that I meet with on a monthly basis, but those that I have, the conversation pertained primarily to addressing City Council subsequent to taking a look at the ICMA report. Not only that, but next, you know, the 17th is next Monday. By the time I could make some phone calls, I don't, they'd only have five days to look at their calendar. In terms of the goals and visions that council spoke about for two meetings, I know Tony Bartholomew has put together another summary along with Tim McLean, our intern, I believe. And that is ready essentially anytime. We could certainly put that together and if you want to discuss it, you can do that Monday. Otherwise, it'll be a report for the following agenda.
Yeah. I'm wondering, in order to free up some time, like Mayor Protem Kirwin suggesting, I think, free up some time on the 31st, is there some other business in addition to the goals and vision that we can conduct on the 17th and have a regular meeting as well as a goals and visions? And maybe that would free up some time for the report from ICMA on the 31st?
Are there agenda items that are going to come forward for the 31st that we could move up? Or being that that's two weeks off, will they not be prepared?
Let me ask Mr. Miller if we have any public hearings scheduled from the planning commission. That would take precedent.
Okay.
Mark, anything scheduled coming up?
No, but we wouldn't have the 15-day time period anyways. But no, we don't.
All right. That's a good idea. We can, if you like, we can certainly allocate a day scheduled for a council meeting and have just essentially the ICMA folks show up on that date. And unless there's something critical to the operation, I would have staff keep everything off that, that meeting date.
On the 31st, okay. And then you could move things that were going to come on the 31st, regular business items, up to the 17th. You want us to keep the meeting on the 17th or not?
Just the 24th.
Or just the meeting on the 24th?
The next meeting is the 24th.
Pardon?
The next meeting is the 24th.
24.
The next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay.
I see nothing that would have any sense of urgency to have this body meet next Monday, unless you wanted to have some specificity in anything you wanted to discuss. But in terms of any consent, there's no public hearings, nothing for consent or regular business that has a sense of urgency.
Okay. Would we then, if we have the ICMA report on the 31st, then at our next regular scheduled meeting, which is February 7th, would we have the special meeting to discuss the proposed revisions for the budget priorities at that time? Is that what you're suggesting, Councilman Fleming?
Yes, that we have the special meeting on the 31st for the ICMA report. And then February the 7th for the purpose of revising the 2011 budget.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
And then for Monday, January 24th, since we would be moving the study session regarding taking another look at the budget, from the 24th to February 7th, we could finish up goals and vision on the 24th, where we were going to have the budget discussion.
I think that we pretty much had come to conclusion on those items, but we haven't seen it all printed out. And that would be a chance for us to discuss, not that we're going to, you know, have to redo them all. But then the first motion that cancels, the special meetings of those two dates can occur, the first motion. And then the second and third motion here will have to be for the 31st. And on the 7th, we're looking at what time?
7:30.
Before the, at the regular meeting?
We can make it 7:00, it's time with me. 7 o'clock. But we won't finish it. We'd never finish it.
Immediately following. Let's do it immediately following.
After the meeting?
Okay.
Maybe we could have as short as possible for the agenda on the 7th. I don't know if we're going to have liquor hearings then or not. And do it immediately follow the special meeting portion immediately following the regular meeting. Then we'll have a bigger time span.
Sure.
Okay? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Are we moving the meeting on the 31st up to 6:00 as we had planned to do on the 17th? Because right now, it's scheduled for 7:30.
Should be at 6:00.
7 o'clock? On the 17th?
No, on the 24th.
On the 31st, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to need three separate motions here. Who wants, Councilwoman Kirwin, Mayor Protem Kirwin, I called on you for the first one. You want to?
Therefore be resolved that the Troy City Council hereby cancels the special city council meetings of January 17th and January 24th, 2011.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Then the second one, the meeting for the 31st?
Resolved that...
Mayor Protem Kirwin, go ahead.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby schedules a special meeting for January 31st at 6:00 PM in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of reviewing the ICMA report.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as just presented. The special meeting on the 31st at 6:00 PM.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
A question, right now, the way our schedule stands, that would be a meeting from 6:00 to 7:30, and then a regular meeting at 7:30 unless we cancel the regular meeting.
Correct?
It is correct.
Okay. Then we'll have to need, we'll have to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take care of this resolution and then we'll go to the next one. Okay. Discussion on that? Thank you for bringing that up. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Then we need a resolution to cancel the regular meeting on the 31st.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Howellak, that we cancel the regular meeting for January 31st. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we need a resolution for the scheduling of a special city council meeting. Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby scheduled a special meeting for February the 7th immediately following the regular meeting in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of revising the 2011 budget and future year's budget priorities.
Tuck.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howellak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. I think that takes care of all the agenda items that we need. Do we have another one? Councilman Fleming?
Madam Mayor, are we sure that we don't need to have a meeting on January the 24th? A regular meeting on January the 24th?
Yeah.
Are we still having that? Because I'm confused. Have we canceled just the 17th or the 17th and the 24th?
The special.
It's the special.
We're going to keep the regular meeting on the 24th.
Right.
Clear.
Madam Mayor, I...
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I had a question for management. Now that we've scheduled and ICMA had a little trouble getting all of the data that they wanted, I guess I want a little clarification at this point. What kind of data and comparisons can we expect in this report?
Mr. Zurley?
Mr. Rapp and I speak on occasion. And he hasn't identified any specific municipalities that he's going to compare us to, but I suspect that he'll have a comparative analysis in similar-sized cities across the United States.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any, any council referrals or council comments?
No, just a...
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Just to follow up to that, I know that, that it was the intention of ICMA to work in collaboration with Wayne State University in terms of gathering some data and putting that together. Has that gone well? Are you aware of that? Is that one of the things that has put us?
I believe the collaboration with Wayne State is for the police department element. And I think they're still on time in that respect. I've only spoken to one of the consultants who introduced himself to me about a month or so ago, and he seemed to be on schedule. But the request for the delay, because of the delay, was due for all of the other elements with the exception of the police department.
Yeah, would, I would request that you follow up and find out how the timeline is going for the police review. And then just shoot an email to council members. Thank you.
And are there any council comments at this time?
Mayor.
Yes, before that. But, oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking over there for comments. Yes, Mr. Miller?
You might want to note, J7 on the consent agenda scheduled a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program on January 31st. So then that would have to be deferred to February 7th. You have to, it's been scheduled as part of the consent agenda.
Oh, all right. So we need another resolution. Thank you for catching that. Do we have to suspend the rules again, Mrs. Bartholomew, to change the date on J7?
Thanks, Senator.
No, actually, it would be a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Can we have, there's a motion to reconsider J7.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kirwin, that we reconsider, reconsider item J7 at this time. Discussion? The vote on the reconsideration, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Has, has that public hearing been noticed?
No.
That's why we got to catch it.
Well, the, the reason I ask is, do we not need, how much time do we need? Can we schedule it to the 24th rather than the 7th?
No, I don't believe we can.
It takes two weeks rather than 10 days?
We, I believe we'd be safer both going with the 7th to make sure that we have enough time.
Okay. I'm trying to keep as much off that meeting as possible.
I know. Okay, we need a resolution to schedule the public hearing for the February 7th.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
If you don't mind, if you could schedule either date and either-or date, and we'll find out if we can move it up. If we can't, then we'll schedule a later date.
All right, we'll do either-or. Okay, yes. Mayor Protem Kirwin?
Just a point of order. I'm just wondering if that can be up to administration when we're scheduling a public hearing. And I go to that clerk.
No, we have to have a vote. No, we have to schedule.
So...
Mr. Blum?
Mayor, we could be a little creative. You could, you know, again, the best course would be to have a date certain. That way you can send out the notices. I do not at this point in time know what the notice is. I, it may be seven days, it may be 15 days. I'm just not sure at this point in time.